YouTube and you may be on through Zoom, but anyone who's listening can access the audio and video of this and also find the agenda by going to our district website. If you'd like to see the agenda, the easiest way is really to to go on to our board or our district homepage, select district policies, go under school board, select district policies, and that will take you to the board docs program and you'll be able to find the meetings and the agenda in that particular area. Since we're new to this process, we may encounter some glitches along the way. So we ask for your patience. We're we're being assisted this evening by Joe Way, Joe Calamita, our IT staff, who will be working behind the scenes to help us through the meeting and to put documents on the screen and help us out. So we'll attempt as much as possible to conduct this meeting in the same manner as our in-person meetings would be. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and I ask our board secretary, Mrs. Guidish, to determine board member attendance through roll call. This is Guidish.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mrs. Stratton? Mr. Chapina? Dr. McLendon? Dr. McLendon?
You need to mute on mute.
Yeah, I was trying to do that here.
Thank you. Dr. Hamburger?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Arons?
Here.
Dr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Fiddler?
Here.
Eight members are present.
Thanks, Mrs. Guidish. So we have a quorum and we will proceed with the meeting. So before we get into the agenda, I just want to acknowledge a few things. Most notably, the work of our district staff and administration who are right in the midst of learning new ways to work in a virtual environment during these unprecedented times. And this is an experience that has really pushed the limits of their creativity. It's forced them to learn how to use technology and other solutions to address the continued educational needs of our students. So we're really appreciative of the efforts and resourcefulness of our of our teachers who have remained in contact with students and parents, and they provided an array of learning opportunities to help keep students engaged in learning. Also, our food services staff who've done a great job to provide grab and go meals for those students who qualify in the district. And to our administrators who have been working tirelessly to monitor updates from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Department of Health, and the Berks County Intermediate Unit. Each day, I know they're networking with their colleagues, they're conferencing, and they're coordinating communications with staff and families. I think it's also important to recognize we have many community members who've stepped up at this time. They're sharing their talents and their time to assist our Exeter families in locating and accessing resources in the community. And maybe, maybe perhaps, you know, later this evening, we'll hear a little bit more about their efforts in the community. Of course, we're tremendously indebted to the healthcare workers or emergency personnel and other members of our community who are working in essential roles to sustain us and keep us healthy and safe during this precarious time. And we think of Mike Chapina this evening who isn't with us, but I know Mike has been working extremely hard through St. Joseph's in his efforts to support the staff there and organize programs to address the pandemic. But finally, I want to, I want to reach out and and recognize, you know, the students and families. I mean, they have been suddenly thrown into a an alternate reality. They've had to deal with the unexpected complications of supervision for their kids and everything that that involves in keeping them healthy, safe, you know, engaged throughout the day and productive. So it's pretty clear, this is the time, you know, for us to do all we can to support each other. And it's really a time that we come together as a community for the common good. So before we get into the actual agenda, I would like to turn to Dr. Phillips, perhaps Dr. Winters for an overview of the past couple of weeks, what's been happening in the district? And what is it that we can expect in the days and weeks to come? So, Dr. Phillips?
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. And I'd just like to reiterate basically everything you just said, the patients that we've seen from the parents and the students, the hard work from the staff and the administration. The Food Service Department has been lights out fantastic, working to provide food to our community. I can't count the emails that I received from staff offering their help, wanting to know what they could do. So, yeah, I can't, I can't second enough all the thanks that you've given to the community. And again, you may hear a little bit later, if not, I can touch on it at the very end, how some community members have stepped up and are creating some outreach for the community as well. One of the things I know you'd wanted me to do was sort of give a kind of a roundup of where this, where this began and where we are now, and then where we're going. When we started to see what was going on specifically in Montgomery County, we met at his administrative group. We started to plan and brainstorm on what we were going to do, how we were going to do it. We've got some direction from the state, be it the governor and/or Pennsylvania Department of Education, and what we're going to be calling our phase one approach. We got together, and again, the staff has been fantastic, creative, I can't say enough. Got together K two four, so that would be K through grades four, put together packets of information that were to be able to last three weeks worth of work for our students, what was termed review and engagement. Our fifth through 12th grades were also to be doing something on Schoology, again, to our review and engagement. None of this was to be graded. It was basically optional, but it was all to engage the students to keep them thinking about education and sort of keep a connection with them. We wanted our staff to reach out and connect with the families and students as well. During that process, there were a few days where we came in and produced the packets, had them go out to the buildings. Tremendous, again, parents came out, got all that information. We are in that third week now. And again, we've had online stuff going on that has just been tremendous. Again, seeing emails from families and staff, just echoing that. When we started to hear, and as you mentioned, I'm on a daily conference now, whether it be with the intermediate unit and/or PDE and/or the governor, getting information and things are changing daily, if not hourly. We heard shortly after we started into our first week of phase one that there was going to be talk of a two-week extension, and we would be planning for what would be called phase two. Phase two was an online program considered to be continually, a continuity of instruction, continuity of education. It was a virtual online engagement with the students, not so much review as more as trying to get them to go ahead a little bit. We were in the, the process of planning with that, and Dr. Winters, I'm going to ask you to be specific a little bit, a little later on, on what that looks like right now, because we just finalized our phase two plan. I'll be submitting that to the state. And it really just talks about how we're going to instruct our students going forward. That brought the administrative team together. We shared it with department chairs. We're sharing it with the union. There'll be a lot of input on this before we send it out. And then, once that takes place, our students will be getting instructed from our teachers virtually. To make that happen, we put out a survey, our IT department put out a survey of what students may or may not have access to resources for devices. We have two days set up, Thursday from noon till five, and Friday, right now, 10 to 1, we might have to extend that time for students to come out and pick up devices. I realize in discussions with Mr. Way, I think in an hour, our Thursday sessions are appointments to pick up devices were filled. So it's again, the parents are stepping up, the community is stepping up. We're going to get those devices in the hands of our students. We initially had planned, as you heard from the governor and some of my reports that were on our website, that we were going to be coming back on the sixth and the seventh, I'm sorry, the seventh and the eighth with our teachers for training and our students return on the ninth. Everyone knows now that did not take place. The governor extended it for two weeks and now has extended it to indefinite. So at this point, we're working on not only phase two, but what we're just as a superintendent group, we meet basically daily in Zoom conferences similar to this, a phase three approach. What does this look like if all indications are that it will go throughout the school year? How are we going to handle that? We have gotten some guidance from the state as well as the federal government on how we're going to handle assessments. As has been reported, there will be no assessments, so forth as keystones, PSSAs, PASAs. Those assessments are no longer going to be given this year. The AP testing is still going to go on. We've reached out to our AP teachers to reach out to our students that are going to be in the AP classes. There are many YouTube instructional videos, as well as our teachers will reach out to the students and try to prepare them the best we can for the AP testing. Again, phase three is something we're just starting to discuss now, but we're focusing on phase two right now. The phase two plan as it stands is a way to instruct our K through 12 students as a virtual platform, and that is scheduled to go off tentatively in the next week or so. So I'm going to ask Dr. Winters, I know you had sent the document, we talked about a little bit, just maybe touch on what maybe I haven't to this point on plan phase two.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. I, I too would add what both Dr. Hamburger and Dr. Phillips have said. Our staff and just the community at large has been amazing. And to see everybody working together so hard towards, towards a common goal and towards the common good of making sure that our kids get a quality education, even in these uncertain times, has been really amazing. When we talk about the phase two plan, really, that's a, that's a shift from review and engagement to what we're calling planned instruction. That's new content. And so the curriculum and instruction office has collaborated with other district administrators and building principals to develop what that phase two plan will look like. It addresses what a developmentally appropriate amount of work is for students over the course of a week. It touches on office hours for teachers in terms of when teachers can be available so that if students' parents have questions, they know how they can access them to get that help. It involves training. There's been very intensive PD. I would say really since this started on March the 16th, Dan Missy and Karen Dununzio have been doing a tremendous amount of coaching and PD with our teachers. And this week, it's been more targeted around preparing folks to implement that phase two instruction. It started yesterday and it's happening K to 12. The plan ensures that we're meeting the needs of regular ed, special ed, students that are ESL, students that have other learning needs and challenges. And basically what we're trying to do is we're trying to look at the needs that our students have in the brick and mortar and figure out how to best replicate and meet those needs in an online and virtual setting. We're talking a lot and using words with teachers and administrators like fluid, dynamic, flexible, because this is a plan that's going to need to be those things. As Dr. Phillips has mentioned, we get new information almost on a daily basis. And so sometimes we're telling our administrators one thing at eight o'clock in the morning, and by lunchtime, that's changed. And so, you know, we're just being very adaptable right now and moving forward with that. The plan is, is very close to being complete. The next step would be to get that accessible on our website to get a communication out to parents about what the expectations are for students so that parents can be partners in the home. And then also to figure out how we can basically take that plan and share it more corporately with the public. And so we're discussing what some of those ideas may be, whether it's through a future curriculum, curriculum committee meeting, which is coming up in a couple of weeks, we're exploring some of those different options. But again, the plan is really designed to make sure we're meeting the needs of students and really taking all those things into consideration. It's been a true collaborative effort.
Thanks, Dr. Winters. And I just want to add to lessen the stress level for everyone, parents, students, staff. As Dr. Winter said, this is extremely fluid and flexible. There is not an expectation that this is going to be what you got when you were in the classroom. The rigor will be there, but it will not be expected to be what we got in the classroom. We will work with students, teachers will be flexible. We will support as best we can to, as Dr. Winter said, provide a, a strong instructional program, but with as much support as needed. This is again, going to be a community and staff partnership. So we're looking for your input to continue to go with this so we can support as best we can. And I guess once again, once this is put out, we'll have it on our website. We'll be utilizing social media. We'll be using every website we can get out to so everyone understands what this is going to look like, how this is going to work, and how the district is going to support the students and the families. So I would urge you to keep looking at the website. I know there's been a lot that have gone out, but listen to those parent links that are going out on the phone calls and as well as read the emails. Because we really want to be, we really want to be as informative as possible to make sure everyone gets the information they need. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger.
Dr. Phillips, I just had a, just a follow-up question, and maybe some board members have questions as well. But I wanted to know a little bit about student attendance and grading.
Okay.
Could you speak a little bit about, you know, how you plan to handle those things?
Sure. Grading is still being discussed. I think we have the framework of grading. You know, at the elementary level, we're looking at basically the observational information of standards. Are they meeting the standards, that type of stuff? I think when you get to the upper grades, we're looking at a little bit of work completion. And then you get to the higher grades, I think it would be more of a looking at the level of completion. But we're certainly, again, not looking for the type of rigor that we would get on a daily basis in our classrooms, brick and mortar. Attendance wise, again, still in discussions. We'd have been sort of bending about the idea that completion of work would consider be considered attendance. But we're also sensitive to the needs of the community. We understand that some of these students may be working. We understand some of these students may be watching their siblings. So we're looking to be flexible on that. So again, as Dr. Winter said, when we finalize our plan, which should be taking place in the next day or so, we will be finalizing grading as well as attendance and having that be part of the package.
Question about the the AP testing?
Yes.
You talked about how you're going to, how students are going to be supported with that? Like, how, how's it going to be actually administered?
My understanding is the AP test will be given at home. It's a 40, it's going to be a 45-minute test. And they will be tested on the majority of the material up to the point that the coronavirus took its toll. They will be expected to know some of the newer information, but I don't believe that's going to be the central part of the test to this point. That is the only test that I know of, though, assessment that is going to be continued. Keystones have been canceled, Pasa and PSSA tests have been canceled. I believe SATs have been canceled.
Can I just say too about the AP testing? On the AP testing site, they have already put up YouTube videos, live, live YouTube, that students have already been studying and reviewing material with different teachers from around the country. I guess they're not, you know, they're not Exeter teachers, but that has been set up and, you know, students are using it already.
My understanding, it's five to seven videos, but yes, that they're, they're really, they're really trying to be flexible as well as everyone else in this situation to support the students.
The, the other piece with AP that I have learned is that my understanding is that the assessment is only the free response portion. They're not doing the multiple choice component. They're just doing the written component, which is, I guess, slightly more valid when you're doing it from home in a non-proctored setting than purely a multiple choice assessment. More information continues to come out. I got an invite today for early next week for a webinar through BCIU on AP information.
And as Dr. Winter said, information changes, that's the information I didn't get yet. So the information is changing hourly.
Dr. Phillips, could you also review that food pickup information? It seems like, for some reason, there's still some confusion out there. So can you review that for families and where they can get the food and when?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Ann to jump in on me, on this with me, so I don't make a mistake here, because I know you've been sort of spearheading this, and you deserve a lot of credit for the way this has worked as well. My understanding is, oh, I'm going to, two things. My understanding was that at Lorraine, Jacksonwald in the high school, we were providing lunch and breakfast for our free and reduced lunch. And Antietam was for everyone. We've gotten some good news from Courtney Epler, who's also deserves unbelievable credit for what's been going on. And I don't, I don't think I'm jumping the gun here, Mrs. Guidish. We've now been approved to provide free or provide lunch and breakfast for all students at those sites. Is that correct?
Well, let me just step back. We have four locations, building locations, and, you know, I can speak to the approval later, but it is at Lorraine, Owatton, Reifton, and Senior High. And we also have a satellite location, the Antietam Pool. We've modified our distribution to coincide with delivery and preparation. The distribution of meals will be on Wednesdays tomorrow at the four locations, building locations, as well as Antietam.
But when that food is distributed, it's roughly about enough for four days now, five days?
We're distributing enough for five days. That's the most that you can distribute at one time. So it's breakfast and lunch, five, for five days.
Great. Can you talk a little bit to the approval of the?
That's my understanding, based on just information Courtney shared yesterday.
So you, you don't necessarily have to have free and reduced lunch anymore at any of those sites to receive the food?
Correct.
Anyone under 18 years old can come out and be provided with that food?
Correct.
How many, how many are we preparing for then to come?
Thousands, we prepared last week.
Their preparation is again, based on what happened last week. And I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but, you know, we are in thousands.
Yeah, they're doing a tremendous job.
With my understanding that.
There was a big turnout at Antietam Pool.
Dr. Amber?
Yeah, I was just going to say, my understanding is that the student has to be present. So it's, there is some documentation, I suppose, that the student is indeed an Exeter, you know, school district resident. Is that correct? Or, or is it just sort of an indiscriminate distribution of food?
At Antietam, it was whoever 18 and under was there, students, they received meals. And I'm not going to, I'm going to, you know, talk with Courtney about how it's actually going to work at the building level. But I can provide that information after this evening. Send an email to the board.
Other questions? Okay, Dr. Amber?
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Thank you, Dr. Winters, for that overview. And, you know, it's really helpful when we, we hear periodically what's, what's going on. I think the, you know, the, the regular communications to the board are helpful, just kind of a brief summary of what's happening from week to week is much appreciated. And and so yeah, I know the board wants to stay appraised of, you know, of developments as they occur and and we're glad for, you know, when you forward that information to us. We're going to move into the agenda then. And I think it's time to move into item two, which is public comments. An opportunity for any members of the public to make a comment regarding items on the agenda or any other, any other comments they'd like to make that would be relevant to the operation of our, of our school district and programs. Joe and Joe, do we have any, anybody on the line?
No, we don't have anyone.
We don't have any, do we have any email or any other communications that came in through your office, Mrs. Guidish?
No, I have received none.
Okay.
Dr. Hamburger, fair well, maybe, once we're done with the meeting, and maybe there will be questions from the community if they would like to email the district. And then we could put it out on our website, kind of a frequently asked questions site. We can do that? If that would be okay by the board?
I just want to make sure that, you know, if people have questions, they do have a conduit. And I mean, even, I mean, we could theoretically, at the very end of the meeting, open it up for another public comment section, just in the event that people are having a hard time getting through. And are you suggesting that they would email Mr. Way or Mr. Calamita?
Sure, if they would email the district, if they have questions that maybe they couldn't get on, we could do a frequently asked questions section on our website. And then respond to the, the questions, at least at that point on, on our site where anybody could go on and see.
Okay, so maybe, maybe, maybe our IT guys can contract that throughout the meeting and let us know at the end of the meeting whether we get any additional questions or comments.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, well, then we'll move on. I know we have a few presentations this evening. First presentation is with Mr. Jamie Schlesinger. He's going to be talking about refunding opportunity discussions. Jamie is the director of PFM Financial Advisors, and he's been with us before. Jamie, we're looking forward to your presentation. Welcome.
Well, thank, thank you. Hopefully everyone can hear me. I'm going to wave, hope you can see me as well. As you can see, I prepared a presentation for today's, tonight's meeting. Obviously, this is a little bit new for everybody here. Hopefully, we can go through any questions you may have as I go through it. As you know, we have seen some very unique times in the financial markets. If anyone's been paying attention to their 401Ks or pensions, obviously, we've seen some ups and downs in the stock market. The mortgage interest rates have dropped dramatically, US Treasuries dropped. That's the same concepts behind the world of municipal bonds. They've certainly had a little bit of a roller coaster ride the last few weeks. And we've been talking to Ann for the last few months about the type of opportunities that the district has to consider for potential refinancings in the near future. With that said, if you want to just turn to the second page, this will give you a picture of what the market has looked like from an interest rate standpoint. Wait for Joe to, to switch that or go to the next one. Hopefully, there it is. Yeah, if you want, actually, if you want to scroll up a little bit more than that, that bottom section of that second page, I think is a, is a good snapshot of what we've seen. So many of you who have seen me present in the past, we've included this particular chart. This is called the municipal market data chart. Essentially, this is where interest rates are for tax-exempt, AAA-rated local government or municipal bonds. This particular snapshot shows the history over the last year or so, since January of 2019. As you know, I've been here a number of times. We've done plenty of refinancings over the last few years. This is no different in the concepts that we're going to talk about tonight. You can see all the way to the left, that's where we were in 2019. Those rates are, were about 2.2% back then. Historical average over the last year or so has about been 1.1, 1.61%. You can see all the way to the right, this has been the last few weeks or so. There has been a major spike up and spike down in interest rates, and that's mostly due to the number of things that have happened in the, you know, the world economy And that's mostly due to the number of things that have happened in the, you know, the world economy in relation to, of course, this virus and, and where it started in China and ultimately where we are today. Rates about three weeks ago dropped to all time lows. We saw the US Treasury rates drop, you know, under a half a percent for the 10-year rate. And that was certainly alarming number, even though it was quite low. Following the, the virus coming to the United States and being more prevalent and the markets adjusting to that, rates, you know, started spiking up, mostly because investors in the, in the municipal bond market and even in the stock market started liquidating and getting into the cash positions. And that's not uncommon for, you know, this type of, you know, financial potential. We might remember in 2008, when the financial markets collapsed, you know, during the mortgage crisis, we saw a very similar concept where the investors started disappearing and there was a liquidity crisis. Well, that was a major concern, you know, over the last week, where many of the investors were pouring their, their money out of the markets. And that was no different. So what happened was those rates spiked up and it actually hit the all time high during that, that period. What ultimately happened was, and this is obviously very, very fluid right now, but we had the stimulus package that, that, that came through, you know, last week, toward the end of last week or this week, and rates started kind of stabilizing. And that's mostly because some of those fears didn't necessarily go away, but there was some comfort level that, that the, you know, the, the government and the, the market would start to kind of go to something somewhat normal. Certainly, I don't think we're going to be normal for, for, for a period of time. But at least from our perspective, we're starting to see things from the ratio standpoint go, go in a right direction. That's what this interesting part that we're seeing from the Pennsylvania market. There technically hasn't been, prior to the last couple of days, a bond sale in Pennsylvania since March 5th. That's a long period of time, especially when rates were, were that low. It's mostly because the, you know, the market just wasn't there. The investors weren't there. So I will tell you, over the last two days, we've actually had two transactions, two bond issues completed in Pennsylvania. And I think we're going to start to see some more. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm here tonight is really to kind of get the concept of potential refinancings and maybe getting some flexibility to move forward with that particular opportunity. So if you want to scroll down to the, to the next page, the, the page that has the, the yellow one.
Jamie, real quick, can I just ask a quick question about those two issues? Were they successful? Because I know one of the things I thought that we were hearing some concern about was whether or not you were going to be able to save a significant amount with an issue around now. Were those issues successful?
Yes, so I would tell you that the two issues that were occurred were both Western Pennsylvania school districts. They were not done by PFM. They were done by two different underwriting shops. They both were successful. We, the one just happened today, so I didn't get all the color on it, but we did. I did talk to one of the underwriters that dealt with the first one, and they were able to find buyers and ultimately price those bonds in levels that were in, very similar to what we were seeing back in, in February. And that's, that's a, a good thing. Obviously, we don't, certainly don't think those rates at the, you know, half a percent or 0.7% that we were seeing, you know, a few weeks ago were, were real or, or normal. But I think where we are now, at least in an underlying interest rate, is, is more normalized. And we're hoping they'll be somewhat stable. Certainly, I think we're going to see some ups and downs. And that's, that's partly why we're going to look for some flexibility. But to answer your question, yes, they, they were able to go to market. They were able to find buyers. You did point out a good point. You know, last week, there were issuers throughout the country that started going to the market. Some of the sales were postponed or, or, or some didn't, just didn't happen. Specifically, some in New Jersey. You found other ways of, of getting some of the transactions done, whether it was with bank loans or other forms of, of funding. So again, the most efficient manner of financing for, for districts, you know, these days has been the bond market. But, you know, we always try to look at all the alternatives if there's, if there's economics to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this page is, is a snapshot of your debt. As it, as it turns out, and I'll, I'll describe this because I know it's somewhat hard to see on, on the screen for, for some of the people looking from the outside. I highlighted essentially four different issuances in yellow. You have approximately 64, almost $65 million outstanding principal right now. That, that is outstanding. And about 70% of it is going to be available to be refunded between now and the next six months. So clearly, from an underlying interest rate environment, you know, assuming the markets, you know, are, are efficient enough, you know, this is a good time to be looking at this, just given where the underlying interest rates are. And obviously, it's very important to be looking at this in a, in a, in a prudent manner to, to obviously reduce interest expense for the taxpayers. So the concept we're going to talk about is looking at this in multiple phases because of, one, tax reasons and, two, just from, from a timing standpoint. So I will touch on, kind of starting from the middle of the page, which is column five, seven and eight first. Those are the 2013, 15A bonds and the 2015B bonds. So those are three different issues that are outstanding. All of those are currently callable, meaning there's no, you know, call provision. We don't have to wait at all. And in, in this case, they've all passed the call. And that's mostly because there wasn't really much economics to be refinancing prior to the, the market's going down this much. So this was, you know, a relatively new concept to consider, refinance in these bonds. The outstanding balances, the 2013 is just under $9 million. The 2015 is around $9 million and the 2015B is about $4 million. So that would be considered what I call step one, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. The more, the, the larger of the two that options is actually the one all the way to the left. That is the Series A of 2012. That has approximately $20 million of outstanding principal. The only difference here is that has a call provision, meaning that's the, the optional redemption. You can't refund that technically until November 15th, 2020. However, you can use something called a current refunding, which allows you to refinance that 90 days in advance of that. So conceivably, we could settle on an issue as early as mid-August. So when we start to do these, these refinancings potentially, you know, we would start to work on that one sometime, you know, around the summertime from a, from a logistical standpoint. So that's why we're looking at this in, in potentially two steps, because that one we have to wait for anyway. Anyone have any questions on this page? Okay, if you want to scroll to the next page. I highlighted most of this on this page. I think this is more for, you know, the board and, and the public to potentially review. But as I mentioned, the, you know, overall market that we've seen here is, is certainly very fluid and we'll see some ups and downs because of the fact that we're starting to see some bonds being sold. We'd like to start to consider looking into, considering refinancings and parameters resolutions over the coming, you know, month or so, which is the legal documentation necessary to kind of get the process started. So the top three financings that I described would be the 2013, 2015A, 2015B is the first step. And the 2012A is the second step. The, the major refinancing savings is probably going to come from the Series A of 2012. They just happen to have the higher interest rates, which range between 3 and 4%. The other three, which is the first step, range between approximately 2 and, and 3%. So those are a little bit closer to, you know, the market we have today. So, you know, we may not get as much savings, but given the fact that these, you know, these bonds are, are, you know, not very long, not very, not standing for very long. You know, this is kind of one of the last bite of the apples to potentially, you know, save some money if we're going to look at this. My estimate right now, again, this could move a little bit. You could probably save about 400 to maybe $450,000 on that first step, those three financings. And that second step, as of today, probably close to $800,000. So I think we're looking, you know, close to, you know, a million two, depending on what the market looks like over the, over the coming months, which obviously is certainly worthwhile for the district in the near future. Anyone have any questions on this page? All right. So if you want to turn to the next page, which is considered page five. So what this is, this is our, our preliminary schedule. What we've tried to put together is a timeline to, you know, have ultimately the finance team, you know, and and I, and I know the administration and have, you know, a lot to work on. So, you know, this is going to be very fluid over the coming months. Obviously, both we and the district, working from home, even the participants in, in the market, whether it's the rating agencies, even the underwriters are all working from their home. It'd be very interesting to see, you know, selling bonds in your pajamas, but it's certainly possible to see that over the coming months. We have been doing rating calls with, with rating agencies. They are starting to look at, you know, the impacts of, of the virus and what the economic impact is. They have not made any major, you know, downgrades in the market. I think there's been some, you know, general discussion about the impacts for, you know, the airports or, you know, those type of credits that really rely on revenues coming from, you know, people utilizing their services. You know, local governments, school districts, you know, generally speaking, you know, work off tax revenues, you know, possibly transfer taxes and other things. So they're more, more stabilized. Obviously, that's what drives, you know, why your credit rating is a double A. So in this case, you know, if we were to move forward, at least start the process potentially of looking, doing potentially a two-step process. Step one, you know, could get started, you know, as quickly, you know, as, as, as the board says, go to consider this. That would include, you know, putting together the traditional bond offering documents, you know, going to the rating agency for the credit review and eventually going to attend a virtual board meeting in, in, in April. And that would allow you guys to vote on this first step. And we would set certain parameters. And if the market, you know, doesn't behave, you know, we, we just won't execute that transaction immediately. But it would at least give us flexibility to jump into the market if, if the market comes back in, in a fashion that made sense if, if things were to change. The reason why we aren't, we wouldn't be doing both steps at the same time, and I'll bring this up for now, is, one, step two, you can't do today anyway. We would have to ultimately wait and price bonds probably as early as, you know, July, mid-July range. And secondarily, just based on some conversations with Ann, there's some potential, maybe capital needs for the district. So, you know, whether that, you know, over the course of the coming months, while you're working on budgets and, you know, cost of, of these particular projects, we could certainly add and build a financing plan to tack on to the refinancing, which is related to the Series A of 2012. So that does give the districts some time to potentially think about doing that, since you're, you potentially could be going to the market in this case. That's really the ultimate, the timing here. You know, we can probably price if we, you know, moved in a, in a reasonable fashion, you know, maybe even sometime in early May, mid-May at this point. I know that there's, you know, a lot going on at the district. Certainly, if things, you know, were to change, we can certainly adjust that. As a second, you know, alternative, you know, if the market doesn't change, we could always do this, you know, as a, as a combined two series transaction if, as well. So this, the flexibility that I keep talking about, when you do these parameters resolutions, would, would allow us to do that, do these things at, at, at the same time or at separate occasions. And that's, is something we would work with, you know, Ann and, and certainly notify the board of how the market would look at this point. I'll stop for a second to talk. I know you've seen the parameter resolutions in the past and, and, and the refinancing concepts. We would certainly come back with, you know, some adjusted analysis. I did not provide anything as far as numbers today, because again, the market's just so fluid right now. I think I just wanted to notify you what we're thinking about here and understand that, you know, there is, there is some opportunities for the district. I'll stop for a second if there's any additional questions.
I don't have any additional questions, Jamie, at this point, but I just want to say thank you for the work that you did in preparing this for us. And it's exciting, I think, to be looking at this level of cost savings. And, you know, just appreciate your diligence and bringing this to our attention during this time, because I know the market's crazy. I look at it every day on my phone. Probably shouldn't be doing that, but it's, it's exciting. So I just want to say thank you. And I know that the Business Functions Committee is going to be talking about discussions around those capital projects and the potential for new issuance of money on the 8th. So that'll, well, I think, I, I'm definitely in support of this process starting. And, you know, I'm eager to hear what my colleagues think, but I, I would definitely encourage you guys to support us moving forward in this process.
And I guess I will jump in. Thank you. I will jump in on one concept. With, with any of these type of transactions, you know, I like, do like to talk about potential risks or costs to the district. Traditionally, the way these would work is if we were to work on the parameters for this, for that first step, you know, there's ultimately some advertising costs associated with it, you know, for the legal and, you know, preparing some of those, those, those documents for the paper, that there's some cost to that. If we go down the process where we would get a rating and that was completed, and, you know, assuming it stays at the double A credit rating and it's, it's in hand. And if, let's say, the market kind of goes in the wrong direction and we just don't do that first step for whatever reason, that would be a potential cost of, of doing business potentially for this. Traditionally, those ratings are, are held, are good for about six months. So, you know, I don't think it makes a lot of sense not to do this, because I think we can use that rating for, you know, for future use. And ultimately, that flexibility, you know, allows us to do things at, at a, at a pace that works for the district. So outside of that, that's really the only risk is potential cost related to the rating and, and the advertising cost at this point.
Well, I, I appreciate you sharing that disclosure, Jamie. And I think, you know, I, I'm comfortable relying on your professional guidance. And you've, I think you've definitely saved the district in conjunction with Ann and the business office and, and our administration millions of dollars. So I'm, I'm very comfortable following your guidance through this process and I appreciate the disclosure again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question, Jamie. John Fiddler, what, what would those costs be if it's just a ballpark?
Sure. I'll speak generally about the red eagle. I don't normally put the advertising in, but I think those are maybe a thousand bucks between both advertisements, give or take. The rating costs are traditionally based on size of transaction. So I would say that's probably maybe $15,000 or so, if you, if you don't use it.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for?
Last page is just our disclosure. There's nothing, nothing more there to see. I think at this point, from my side, you know, I know that's tough to do a nod when we're all virtually looking at each other. But I think what, you know, my goal would be is if, if the board could provide us a, a nod to say, yep, let's, let's keep the process going. You know, work toward talking with your solicitor and Ann on, you know, the, the, you know, the, the process and the due diligence necessary to, to actually execute a resolution at a future meeting. Should you, should you want to do that? And then we can work toward, you know, attending a future meeting, whether it's sometime in April or a little later.
Yeah, so I would ask, are there any board members that have any reservations about going forward as proposed?
None here.
None from this side over here. I think we should definitely try to get as much savings as we possibly can.
Jamie, I think we're good to go.
Great. Well, thank you for your time. Hopefully, we'll make this seamless as possible. And certainly, if there's any questions from you or the public, you should reach out to Ann and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much for your presentation, Jamie. And I guess we may be seeing you.
Everyone have a good evening.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see me at some point. Thank you, guys.
Okay, take care. All right, we're going to move on to our, the next item in our agenda. It's another presentation by Mrs. Guidish, our Director of Finance, and she'll be covering the, the 2021 Proposed Final General Fund Budget. And I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, just wait for Joe to open it up. All right, slide two, Joe. This is a revised timeline based upon how we had to move meetings today. This is the first look at the proposed final budget. The school board had looked at a preliminary, even though we didn't adopt a preliminary. We've been looking at budget numbers for some time. April 8th, Business Function Committee meeting, as Mr. Aaron's pointed out, where we will look at capital project budgets and, you know, issuing new funds to support long-range projects. The rest of the dates are listed there between, well, I'll point out between April 8th and 13th. Dr. Winters, Dr. Phillips and myself will put a video together to outline the budget reduction recommendations. And then on the 14th workshop meeting, do a review of that with the school board in addition to looking at the five-year projection as well as our food service budget. And then we continue on through April, reviewing budgets. And then special voting meeting on May 12th to adopt the 2021 Proposed Final Budget. Next slide. Next slide. This slide is the calculation of the adjusted index. Uh, you've all seen this before. Just a reminder, our adjusted index is 3.3%. Our current millage is thirty-three point one-one-zero-seven, applying the index of 3.3%. The maximum increase would be thirty-four point two-zero-three-three mils or a little over one mil. Would generate about 1.5 million in additional real estate tax revenue. And again, we didn't adopt a preliminary budget. You adopted a resolution to stay within the index. Next slide. General fund revenue by major source. Uh, what I, in the blue, I'm comparing, uh, the estimate that I showed, uh, on March 10th for nineteen twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one proposed final budget. Local sources, the far right column, uh, actually a reduction of twenty-three thousand and we'll get to that in a bit. Uh, state sources, again, that reflects subsidy increases as well as with largest being retirement uh, and social security, federal sources, very little change. Other sources of revenue, that is where our financing piece comes in. We have leased, done capital lease purchases for technology. Uh, next year, we're also doing, uh, transportation vehicles. Next slide. So revenue changes, I want to point out that, uh, these projections will change, uh, based upon what happens with the economy, uh, what happens with some of our local sources of revenue. Um, there will be a webinar after April third, really to look what, what's happening at the state level with their budget, as well as what school districts, uh, can expect to happen. You know, in terms of collection rate, uh, in terms of our Act 511 taxes, which are earned income tax. So, uh, just be prepared, uh, that there will be modifications. I'm hoping that the independent fiscal office, uh, will provide some guidance in, you know, how can we really, you know, uh, build these into our budget? So just stay tuned for that. Good news, uh, Pennsylvania American Water Acquisition, um, that property became taxable, adding twenty-two point eight million to the assessed value. But we also, uh, had assessment appeals again, and most notable was Walmart, a reduction in assessment of two-point-three million. I'm using a, a collection rate of ninety-eight percent. Uh, for the current year, we use ninety-seven point six, but our actual was around ninety-eight point two-nine. Uh, so build it up, uh, a little bit, uh, but again, that could change, uh, based upon what we, um, will see happening. Um, so we've added to, on a net basis, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand in, uh, real estate tax collections. Act 511 taxes are actually, uh, comparing estimate nineteen-twenty, remember, to next year, it's down a little bit. We had some additional transfer tax revenue. You know, large part, we had that bump because of P A American Water Acquisition. Um, delinquent taxes are, the amount, our collection rate's higher, so our, what's turned over is lower. So we're seeing a little downward trend, but again, that could change. Uh, interest rate decline, I've lowered that to, uh, levels of what I saw in sixteen-seventeen and seventeen-eighteen. Uh, well, we need to look at that more, uh, and watch what's happening. Um, I mean, between looking back from September through right now, we've, you know, interest rates dropped about a hundred basis points. So there, there is a reduction. So that yields a negative, uh, a reduction of twenty-three thousand five hundred before any tax increase in twenty-twenty-one. Next slide. Again, just a chart showing, uh, our net, uh, real estate, uh, property tax revenue net of discount and penalty. It is going up. Next slide. Uh, other local sources of revenue, as I pointed out, um, earned income tax that could, but budgeting a slight increase, but again, uh, stay tuned for, uh, what may happen. Um, and again, the five-eleven taxes, business privilege, transfer earned income. Again, we're showing investment income going down to about four-hundred thousand. Uh, from, in eighteen-nineteen, we had well over eight-hundred thousand. Next slide. The projected state revenue, uh, increase of about six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. Uh, the subsidy for basic education, special education, uh, what was in the governor's budget uh, for education, a little less than what I had shown back during the preliminary phase. Uh, social security, retirement are based upon, uh, wage. And the reemb, you know, that you're, that drives the wage increase and that expense drives the increase in this subsidy. Debt service is really based upon our schedule, uh, and the, the, uh, reimbursement rates, uh, for the different issues. Transportation subsidy, I have it declining slightly. Uh, our contracted, uh, costs are not as high this year as they were in eighteen-nineteen. And that is due in part to not having to contract out as many homeless students. We did more, uh, internally, uh, transporting those students and probably fewer, um, out of district placements, not probably, actually fewer because of the opening of the Laurel Life classrooms. Next slide. Uh, federal sources of revenue, just a minimal change. I'm basing, you know, the federal programs, one, two, three, four, on, uh, the nineteen-twenty allocations. Access funds were at about two-hundred-and-ninety thousand per year. And again, someone is in a recent webinar has, you know, put out the question, what's going to happen to those funds? Uh, will they continue to be available? So there's a lot of things that, um, you know, we will have to, I really learn more about as the days go on and how all of these things are impacted. Uh, as I mentioned, other sources of revenue, again, this has to do with financing. On the revenue side, you reflect the total cost of those assets that you are financing. On the expense side, you also reflect that same cost that you're financing. But in, so the impact, uh, to the budget is really your principal and interest. So we are financing two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand in technology. Uh, that's the most recent number and vehicles of about three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. So it's an increase of three-hundred-and-three thousand year to year. And that's because we're now doing transportation. Next slide. Moving on to the general fund, uh, expenses, uh, this is listed by a major object. Uh, I'm going to have to minimize my screen here and go to my because it's hard for me to see. So the most recent, uh, budget figure for total expenditures, we are at eighty million, eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand approximately. Uh, these slides don't show the preliminary numbers. Uh, there's attachments in board docs, which I, I have that column unhidden. If you, you know, have an appetite to compare from where we were a few months ago to now, uh, it's there for you, but really, I, the natural progression is to compare nineteen-twenty estimate to twenty-twenty-one. But we're at eighty-point-eight million, uh, we were at eighty-two-point-two million. This function, one of the goals of business function committee was to get to around eighty million. So this is before our, uh, budget reduction plans. So, um, we will see where that takes us. Obviously, you know, the increases in, uh, employee wages and benefits are the biggest part. And we have some, uh, additional increases in net principal and interest. And that has to do with our debt payment schedule. Our smaller pro, capital projects that we pay out of, uh, general fund because we have some committed funds. That's up to around three-hundred-and-twelve thousand. Um, and we'll probably review those in more detail at a, the next business function committee meeting. Uh, next slide. So the wages and benefits in total is a two-point-six million dollar increase year to year or four-point-seven percent. As you know, we are negotiating, uh, two bargaining unit contracts. Uh, I have to assume something, uh, you know, for the following year. You know, the four-point, uh, the actual wage of four-point-four percent, that increase really again, remember that we're looking at nineteen-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. Nineteen-twenty estimate reflects some areas that were lower because of turnover. And I meant, I, you know, reviewed those in, um, on March 10th. So don't think there's four-point-four percent increase here. It's, it's just because what, how you're comparing. So the new staff that's included in the budget is an ESL teacher. Uh, and that's based on the needs, uh, of, of the students and the number of students. What's required as well as, uh, special education aid. Uh, healthcare premium increase, not to exceed four percent. We originally had budget, budget is about eight and a half percent, so, uh, not to exceed four percent, but don't expect that to be much lower if all, if any lower than that. That's the, the message that has been set. Uh, and again, social security retirement based upon wages, special pay, retirement. I base that number on the actual, uh, anticipated retirements by looking at who is eligible to retire, superannuated. That's really what that's based on. Next slide. Again, this is a detailed chart of salaries and wages. Uh, you can review that, um, in detail. Next slide. So I mentioned about the, uh, the bargaining unit contracts. I have wage assumptions in there, um, for twenty-twenty-one. New staff that costs is a hundred-and-forty-two thousand. The retirement impact is a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand reduction. Uh, so we have four professionals retiring, uh, and one administrator, and that's all reflected in the numbers. Uh, senior high school position will not be filled and that's reflected, uh, in the budget. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, there was some discussion about building in some type of factor for turnover. I'm still considering that. I really need to look back at history and see if there is a consistent trend. And that, that could possibly be in the custodial area and possibly, um, you know, in, in the driver area. The driver area, not necessarily turnover, but more like, uh, not all routes, uh, being, uh, filled with a driver. Next page. Again, benefit increase detail, uh, for your review. Four hundred thousand is the group insurance. Going down to the very bottom, the, uh, two-ninety is, that's the special pay. Two-hundred thousand is in the estimate. Uh, and that's based upon who's, you know, has, you know, put in their retirement letter. Uh, and again, I think you're all familiar with what that represents, you know, pay for unused, uh, sick time, um, and vacation payout if applicable. And next year, I basically looked at who could potentially, uh, retire. Next slide. Again, I've already, I'm repeating here a little bit. Um, so next slide. The contracted professional services. Uh, the area and where we're seeing a significant increase is in, uh, consultants, uh, year to year, three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. And these are the numbers based, provided by our, uh, special education supervisors as well as the, the former, um, people services, uh, director. We are going to continue to monitor these numbers. One area where there is a significant, uh, increase in the budget, uh, they requested was in the area of psychologists contracted services. Uh, just based upon the need of students. But again, we'll continue to review that number, uh, to make sure that, um, you know, it is accurate because that's quite a significant increase. The IU services, that's really based upon, that's three-two-two, uh, based upon, uh, placements. So it's a two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand increase or seven-point-six percent, uh, really due to contracted professional services. I do want to point out our, um, you can go to the next page. Our, uh, object three-thirty, which is occupational and physical therapy services. We've seen a downward trend, uh, which is good news, uh, from sixteen-seventeen to the current year of about a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand less in the annual cost. Again, just the area of three-two-nine contracted, that's for, we have professional service for emotional, autistic, learning support, multi-disability. And I mentioned the psychological, that was where, really where there was a significant jump. Next page. Other purchase services, net decrease of twenty thousand in total for this area. The area where we are, we are budgeting an increase is in charter school tuition. And that's based upon the enrollment. And we also project the tuition rates. The tuition rates are actually based upon your, your, your budget, your nineteen-twenty budget. Uh, so, um, you know, that is why that number is increasing. Next page. Moving on to the supplies, utilities, uh, textbook and software category, uh, decrease of two-hundred-and-five thousand. And that's due in large part to the cycle of textbook replacement as well as software. And if you recall, uh, our, our social studies and science resources, uh, purchased a significant amount in nineteen-twenty. So, you know, we will not see that again for several years. So that's what causes the fluctuation. Next page. New and replacement equipment, um, the change, uh, what I've highlighted there is technology equipment, what's highlighted in yellow. And I've shown the preliminary budget here because, you know, that's one of the biggest reasons why our number, uh, has gone down. One of the major reasons from eight, eighty-two million to where we are right now is, uh, Joe Way and his staff and along with administration, other administrators. We are really delaying some, um, some lab replacements. Uh, or we're actually going to use Chromebooks, uh, instead. We are delaying some of the STEM lab, uh, replacements until, uh, a future time when I think there's, um, a better direction on what the real, the need is. In addition, you know, Joe Way has obtained, uh, better pricing. In addition, you know, Joe Way has obtained better pricing on Chromebooks, and that'll continue on through May. They things will really start to become competitive. You know, we are having to replace. Or have additional Chromebooks for our students. Again, we are leasing them, but we do record the the total asset cost here. The other thing removed from the budget were iPads replacement. Because back in the fall. They didn't think there would be support for the operating system, but we can utilize those for another year. So the area where it did increase is. Seven sixty two, which is replacement equipment, and I mentioned there that has to do with the capital projects. That are slated smaller capital projects as well as camera replacements. Next slide. Moving on to our last area of objects is interest principal and budget reserve. Again, these figures for. Interest. Are based upon and and the principal or our bond schedule. The. The financing for the capital leases is reflected. In the categories of eight thirty one and nine eleven, and those have been modified. Based upon, you know, an estimate of what our financing costs will be for those. The technology equipment and the vehicles that we will finance. So. In total, object eight hundred will be going down by one hundred twenty eight thousand. Object nine hundred five hundred thirty eight thousand increase. I do want to point out the district does have a budget reserve of three hundred thousand. That is for on things that aren't anticipated as part of the budget, especially in terms of special education. And that unforeseen things. Next slide. So the summary of revenue, expense and fund balance. If we, the two columns highlighted in blue compares the preliminary budget we looked at. And we spoke about the eighty two point two million in expense, and now we're eighty million, eighty point eight million. A few months ago, we were looking at a deficit if there was no tax increase of five million. At this point, with no tax increase, a deficit of three point seven million. That's the revenue less expense line, which is in the in in the middle of the slide. Moving over to the olive green column with the Act One index. If we were to raise mileage to thirty four point two zero three three, the deficit would be two point. Two million approximately. The pink column next to the olive green, a two percent increase, and this is just a scenario for you. To to look at. It would be a two point seven million dollar deficit. Going down to the fund balance components at the very bottom. Of the slide. At this, the way the budget looks at this point, the Act One index would put a slightly over the eight percent limit. Where the unassigned fund balance cannot be more than eight percent of the total expenditures. The two percent mileage increase would put that number at six point seven percent. And with no tax increase, the unassigned fund balance with four point four percent. Again, we do. And go to them two slides down, Joe, to number twenty four. We do have fund balance commitments. The figure I'm showing is one point eight million to begin twenty twenty one. I I'm still reviewing these commitments and need to have discussion with the school board. On. You know, if, again, these will be adopted by resolution with the school board. So we need to discuss them so that everyone's in agreement on the on these commitments and the use of them. So what we've used them for this year is Peasars. Two hundred eighty five thousand, bringing that down to four hundred seventy thousand. Real estate tax assessment reductions. Again, Walmart, that was the largest reduction. Reduction of taxes about seventy five thousand. Capital improvements, again, in this current year. We use our capital improvement commitment of about one hundred thirty seven thousand, so we still have one point eight million in commitments. Again, that's adopted by board resolution. Next slide. And our assignments, assignments are an anticipated use of fund balance in future budget years. We typically include in that a future year budget deficit. We do have some pension obligation in assignments. Contract wage and benefit increases future years. There's a potential for a special education settlement. Technology equipment replacement, and that represents the things that were actually put in a delay mode. For twenty twenty one, based upon, you know, the guidance from. The technology staff. And again, social study and science renewal will be looking at. That removal coming up in five years. We also have to replace bus rate bus radios at some point. So again, it's looking at what may impact your your fund balance in future years. So that assignment is eight point five million. I will be revising it after I complete the five year projection. And again, it's under review and up for a lot of discussion as we go through the budget process. So if you just want to go back to slide twenty three. Just want to point out. That, as I said before. There will be changes to projections based upon what is currently going on. And also the bond refinancings, I will not reflect. Any of those potential savings in twenty twenty one. Because I really don't know what will actually, you know, come to fruition, and that's really not a a good practice. Are there any questions?
Um, I'll I'll start off because that's usually how this goes. First of all, and I just, I just want to applaud the business office, your leadership, Bob's leadership. And in really moving this budget. From what was a much more significant deficit to something that's far closer to what the board's expectations were laid out in those business functions goals. And, you know, I think we still have some room to go, and that's what we're going to be talking about with our budget reduction. Process that you guys are going to be unveiling later this month. But I I just want to say thank you, and that I'm grateful for the work that you guys have done to bring this down. Because we do have a structural deficit at this point, and we need to address that in short order. On top of that, I I just want to say for my colleagues' benefit that the district and its practices and. And in being good spenders, that estimate that we have for what nineteen twenty is going to end up being right now. Is almost a million dollars less than the budget that was approved in total expenses for last year. I think it's exactly nine hundred seventy one thousand, so I'm just rounding up a little bit. So I just want to say, first of all, to our administrators and then to our staff, thank you. And, you know, we, I think we should be grateful for that, for the work that you guys are doing. You know, I think we're going to have some more clarity around some of these future looking numbers as we get that five year projection. And I think that's going to be really important for informing our discussions about where we want to set our tax increase. If there is to be a tax increase this year. And that's going to be really important to inform that conversation. But I I do want to say that, you know, I think our goal here should not to be. Should not be to be miserly about spending, but to be wise about spending. And I think, you know, the structural deficit that we have, I think, reflects a. Maybe an overcommitment to what we're able to afford at this point. And I think we should be mindful as we move forward, and I I've definitely seen a lot of those conversations start to evolve with some of the challenges that we've identified long term. Related to the size of our personnel, utilization of personnel and our schedules at the secondary level. As areas where we really want to be looking at the long term and saying, in a in a strategic vision. Can we narrow our focus to really concentrate on things that we can do really well and serve our students better by. By narrowing our focus or or finding out efficient ways to do more with less. And I think that those conversations are going to continue past this year, but overall, I'm just really pleased with where this is at. You know, I'm excited to see as much as one can be excited for budget control and budget cutting. Those reductions that the administration is going to be unveiling forward, and I I just applaud the work that's been done so far, and I I think we have more to go, but this is a great first step. Thank you.
And this is Dave Hamburger. I I do have a question if we could go back to. Slide eighteen. And my question really has to do with charter school expenses. I think you're projecting an additional one hundred and thirty nine thousand in that area. And I'm just kind of wondering where that number came from, number one. And number two, where do things stand with Governor Wolf's proposal to. Attempt to kind of establish a standard for a tuition rate of ninety five hundred dollars per. Per student. And his reductions in special ed costs associated with, you know, a tiered designation based upon the the intensity of the services that are provided. Those were supposed to be initiatives that would have reduced our expenses by close to three hundred thousand dollars. Yet I'm seeing a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar increase. I'm just kind of curious about those two things.
Well, this right now, this budget reflects the current. Legislation for funding charter schools, which is based upon, you know, our costs. You know, until we. I have not built anything in yet in regard to the ninety five hundred dollars per student. I know that the governor is supporting that, but until. You have something more solid. If it does, you know. So at this point, it's just the the traditional historical way that charter schools have been funded based upon our costs. So that's where that comes from.
But the one. I I can tell you, the discussions that took place in Harrisburg stemmed from. Legislation that would remove charters all the way up until Governor Wolf's sort of trying to to sit on the fence of. Allow charters but have ninety five hundred dollars as you stated. That discussion has completely stopped at this point based on coronavirus, and he hasn't put it his budget together to the point where, you know, if it's reflected or not. There has been no, everything has gone underground as far as anything but coronavirus in Harrisburg at this point. So I I can't help you with anything other than, yes, that was something he wanted to do. There was starting to ramp up discussions between both sides. And then it's come to a screeching halt at this point, so Ann is working off what we have.
Okay. And the one hundred and thirty nine thousand then as an increase, what does that reflect additional enrollments?
Well, we actually adjusted our nineteen twenty number up, and that, once our rates were finally determined for nineteen twenty. They were higher than what we had budgeted. So most of that increase of one hundred thirty nine thousand is due to an increase in costs. Based upon budget. You know, there's variation between regular ed and special education enrollments from year to year. But so those two things.
But not not necessarily an increase in.
Not necessarily, it's not a.
In student population.
No, we're hovering around between seventy five and eighty, and it's been consistent.
Yeah, we just got, we just got the enrollment reports from. Mary Ann Gimney earlier today, and, you know, I think that's, it seems like a fairly stable number. We're not increasing dramatically, and yet we're not decreasing either.
Right, just the fluctuation between special ed and regular ed.
But now that we're doing such a great job with virtual education in the school district, we may be able to kind of see some. Maybe changes in those numbers in the future.
Yes.
Yeah. Those are my questions. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. The slide with the. Fewest number of words had the word that Bob, you just mentioned it pandemic. I think we need to keep in mind, yeah, there it is. Thank you. I think we need to keep in mind that many of our neighbors are losing their jobs. And some of them may not get their jobs back. So if there were ever a year that we would consider seriously not raising taxes, this is the year. And I just think we all need to keep that in mind and to pony up. Cuts, delays, whatever we need to do. To make sure that we don't raise taxes and throw even more weight on the backs of people who. May lose their jobs now and in two weeks and in a month, they may not get those jobs back. That's all I want to say.
Any other questions for Mrs. Gaddish?
I, can I just quickly. Respond is probably a good word, respond to what John just said. John, I think I think that's really well said. I'm definitely going to have to think about that myself more because I was in my own mind expecting that we would have to consider a tax increase. You know, the the first thing that I would say to that, though, is, you know, we we really, I think. Should strive if not, we have an immediate obligation to maintain the fund balance that is. Probably close to that eight percent threshold, and we have been able to do that through. Some wise spending, I think, and and actions that our administration has had over the years in being able to build us up to that point. And and I think we really have an obligation, in my opinion, to protect that. So if if we were going to move in the direction that you're suggesting. You know, we we would really, I think, have to consider some deeper cuts than than looking at eighty million dollars. I I think it's going to be important in the long run, especially as we look to borrow and and have. Additional monies perhaps set aside for capital projects to maintain a fund balance that will not affect our bond rating and and decreasing it. So I I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're suggesting, John, and I I think I think it's really well said. I I just, you know, my my only comment would be, I think, in the context of of that suggestion. There's going to be some more serious work that we would have to do in in preparing to meet. Our revenues and our expenses closer together than than they would be if we kept these numbers where they're at now with. An increase in tax or an increase in mileage. So I just wanted to add that quick.
Well, I would just respond and say that, you know, we're in uncharted territory. And to paraphrase an old cliche, uncharted territory might mean uncharted responses. And if it means deeper cuts, then then so be it. But I I think the, if again, if there was ever a year that that we need to keep the taxpayer front and center, this is the year.
Well, thank you for that, and I'll I'll definitely be thinking about that myself, so I appreciate that, and I'm sure that conversation will continue as we move farther into the process here.
Any other comments, questions? This is Gaddish. Thank you so much. An excellent report, a lot for us to think about. I think there's some really optimistic information in here and also some things that really. Present a high degree of uncertainty that we're going to have to work through. Our next presentation, it's a, it's our regular building program report. This will be Mr. Wisselman, our principal at Lorraine Elementary School, who will be providing us with the Lorraine Report. Providing us with the Lorraine Report. So I'll turn it over to you, Ted.
Good evening. This is Ted Isselman, the principal at Lorraine. Wanted to take a few minutes and speak with you virtually. This is a recorded presentation, but then I will be available to answer questions at the end. So I'm using Screencastify, which is a new program or program that's new to me that our tech coaches are training our teachers on as well. So it's a great way to record information, do an interactive read aloud, et cetera. So I'll be using it to go over our board report. This information is from earlier in the month and it was originally slated for our board meeting in early March. But because of the changes with the medical piece, it's being presented now. So our first page, just a quick overview of school facts and demographics, where we are with our student population. And then at the bottom of this page, you'll also see some information about attendance. Our attendance rate is high compared to the state average. It can always be improved upon and we worked tirelessly to make sure we're sending out timely communications about attendance, trying to clean up. All of our attendance records so that they're as accurate as possible. And then when necessary, pursuing attendance conferences and possibly citation. Issuances for parents as needed. So that we can ensure that students are with us as often as possible. At second page, the next two pages are looking at PSSA and P VAS data. PSSA data, we're looking at how our students performed when they're sitting to take that test. So we have students taking tests in third grade and fourth grade. Our third and fourth graders will take the ELA, English Language Arts. They'll also take the take the mathematics. PSSA. Then when we get to fourth grade only, we're looking at science PSSA. So you'll see three bars in each one of these boxes. And the first bar is really what we're focused on for the onset. That is where our building scored. So if you look at the building score, you can compare it then to the state average and then to what the state goal is. So across the board, we're performing about the state average, which is great. If you look at the statewide goal, we have some work to do in two of the three categories and that work is is happening. We have teachers that are working at building levels. We have teachers that are working at the district level. We have teachers working with Melissa Devlin, with Andy Wallach, with Patrick to. Look at where our strengths are, where weaknesses are, and how we can bolster those weaknesses. So that's a lot of professional development, our one o'clock early dismissals, using that time collaboratively. Bringing in supports as well. We recently had a speaker from PDE come in. And talk with teachers about the math PSSA and gave them some ideas about how to better prepare our students for taking the test. We obviously want to know our students are doing well, but if we can also give them some tips to to test while that doesn't hurt. This next page is just a, it's a three year comparison of ELA scores and math scores for the different grade levels. And you can see, looking at the blue bars, that's how our students performed. With a score of either proficient or advanced, the red bars are those that scored basic or below basic. And we have some inconsistencies if you look across the grade levels. Third grade is our first year of testing, fourth grade is obviously the second year of testing. I think collectively, if we look at ELA, we have seen a lot of growth in ELA. Because we've had some consistency in the professional development there in the staffing in that level. Our teachers have become a lot more comfortable with how. We have rolled out new initiatives because it's been done in a very gradual and strategic way. We've had a little less success in that for math, I I think really because of our lack of consistency with staffing. I think our teachers are doing a tremendous job in understanding the investigations program and the broader math curriculum. And I think with continued support, we'll see continued gains in the math area. So I'm optimistic about that and hopeful that we'll just continue to see some of that. Some more growth in the math field because of that, but our teachers have done a great job of embracing investigations, finding. Other resources to help supplement it and then also speaking up and asking for for more when they need more. Our next sheet here is our page is looking at the growth measure. So PSSAs is just looking to see how students are doing at that particular day when they sit down to take the test. P VAS is looking at how much a student has grown and looking to see if this student has gotten a year's worth of growth and a year's worth of time. And if you look at the measures, we are hitting and exceeding that. In ELA and in math, which is phenomenal and that is all credit back to our teachers and to our students who are who are rock stars. The last page of this, and I know I'm kind of going quickly. The last page of this is outside of the the hard data pieces and it's looking at our student programming. It's actually the next couple pages. An initiative to support literacy that we kicked off during Read Across America Week was One School, One Book. Or One Book, One School, our APT provided one copy of the book Clementine to the oldest student in every family. There were some great activities that our librarian then woven to be done at home and at school to promote literacy in both locations. We had guest readers coming in for Dr. Seuss Day on March second. And we had several central administrators and board members come down and interact with our students. And also gift a book to classroom libraries, which was awesome. And then on that last page there of the report, we also see a few other student supports or student programs that took place. One of them is the five by five connections our school counselor does with students. She asks staff members to volunteer in their off time, maybe during their planning or their lunch. It's voluntary to get paired at random with a student. They spend five minutes, five days in a row where they just kind of walk around. Staff member checks in, asks students questions about who they are as a person, not necessarily a student. And it's a great way just to build connections and relationships around the building. We also looked at our tier time interventions and added a social emotional learning piece to that with our school counselor, which has been tremendously successful. Our school spelling bee happened earlier in this school year and our one student who. Won at the building level, advanced to the county level and had a qualifying position. And I'm waiting to hear what happens next. I think we're a bit in limbo as far as the next round of the spelling bee. And then two other exciting pieces were our four students participating in the connects challenge. They did not qualify beyond that initial presentation, but they had an awesome time doing that, placing fourth overall. And then our kindergarten students, we saw an opportunity to work with. Our kindergarten students to build their fine motor skills and using our two recesses, one to be big muscle movement, which is our traditional kind of outdoor fun, running around playing recess. And then looking at our second recess and having that be little muscle movement. So to build students' fine motor within their fingers, doing things like kinetic sand play, play with Lego. Other beating, weaving or braiding. So students were getting more. Fine motor development and our teachers have seen a great improvement. In student strength and ability to do those fine motor skills, which are key for kindergarten and beyond. So we were excited to pilot that this year. It's gone really well and it's something I I see us continuing in the future. I appreciate you guys giving me some time and trying this format for the board report. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have after this. Thank you again.
I have a question, not a question. Well, yeah, there's a question and comment about the five by five connections. I think that's really great. You know that the teachers are making the connections with students. Is there any opportunity for the students to continue? That relationship they started to build in that time? Like a baby.
I would say that what I have noted for myself, you know, having participated in the five by five, we've done it a couple of different ways. We've done it where it's. Two minutes and it's ten days in a row or five minutes and five days in a row. But what I've noticed for myself is that when I see that student outside of the, when that period of time has ended. We're then talking about whatever our initial connection was. So. One fourth grader I have in my head is a student who loves cars and he's always at his grandfather's house, working on cars. So every time I see him in the hallway now, when he's coming in off of the bus, when he's at lunch, that's like a a quick check in and conversation we can have, which is great. And I think that's what it does for a lot of staff members. It lets them see students in a different light. And have more of a personal connection and I know that those conversations are then happening organically outside of the five by five too. So there's not a, there's not a formal continuance, but it definitely does happen.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Ted, I have a question. Dave Hamburger. And it really doesn't have to do necessarily with your report. I'm I'm kind of interested right now. What's your perception is of. The instructional activities that are being provided to. Students through your staff, what your level of communication has been, what you've been doing as a building principal. For these past couple of weeks in helping to support the whole process. Can you, from a principal's perspective, just kind of give us an update of what's happening right now?
Sure, I think it's been a lot of responding. It's it's been a lot of reactiveness. Just because of the nature of pieces changing. So it's trying to stay on top of information as best I can, you know, we can at the building level. And knowing that information changes even from from morning till afternoon, you know, as different folks jump in. So there's been a lot of, there have been a lot of meetings happening. Some are happening at the building level, you know, with building administrators, some are beyond that. So it it's been a lot of just kind of playing catch up and trying to stay ahead as much as we can of what's happening. And then filtering that information back to to. Parents and teachers and then also funneling up concerns from parents and teachers back up into the administration, central administration or into our building meetings. So I would say it's a lot of a facilitator role right now as we're managing the information. And then as best we can to partnering with our curriculum and instruction team because they've really taken the bulk of this on as Patrick had mentioned. So really working closely with Dan and Missy, our instructional tech coaches, with Karen DiNunzio, our instructional coach. And oftentimes it's it's us supporting them because they're running a lot of these trainings. So it's us trying to take back messages then to the teachers. And just doing a lot of the social check in. I know that's been a really big focus for Renee. She's done a lot of that at Jackson Wald and Christie and I are trying to do that as well, just to really look through that human lens. To check in with families, either posting things on Facebook. For of ourselves or things with the building. So it's just a lot of, a lot of different little pieces that, again, trying to make sure we're communicating as best we can. Representing the need as best we can and again, trying to look through everything through the human lens.
As you start this phase two process next next week. Do you anticipate having a way of 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 getting regular updates from all of your staff in terms of. What they've been doing? I mean, in the way of lesson plans or. Were just general plans, you know.
We guess, I would say, we we tried to be really mindful. We we tried to have. Some preemptive conversations as best we could to plan for that piece. So something that we had decided as, you know, the curriculum and instruction team under Patrick and then at the building level. Especially K to four was to build, we're going to be using School G as our learning management system. We already use that in the upper grades. It's something that we're familiar with K to twelve. So it made sense to push it down into grades K to three as well. I'm sorry, four to twelve. People are already using it. So. We, Dan and Missy created class sections or grade level sections so that within. Lorraine, for instance, all of the fourth grade teachers will be accessing the same content. And that will be a place where I can be as well. I can see what content and resources they're generating, they're providing. And then what lessons they're creating. I have that same access into a Watten, into Jackson Wald. Christine and Renee have that same access universally. And we're planning out then now our. Our meetings. So Christie, Renee and I will be meeting every week. The staff will be meeting as a district level. So like all of second grade will be meeting district wide one day. And then we will also have our own building faculty meeting. So. Our our hope is, especially in the first two weeks, is to have a lot of face time or virtual face time. And to have that collaboration time built in. Virtually on School G, but then also through our through our faculty meetings or grade level and department level meetings.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Isselman? Ted, thanks so much for the presentation this evening and I like to do, I like the format. It maybe gave me a sense of what. Students might be kind of experiencing the similar kind of a model.
Yeah, it's a great tool and I I have to give a lot of credit to Dan, Missy. And Karen for all of the training that they've been doing and and Missy gave us that that training. So it is a great tool.
I mean, great. You used it in your presentation. That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move on and now move right through our. Our remainder of our agenda. Just want to. Remind folks that this is a consent agenda, which means that we will be grouping. Various motions within a, within sections where it makes sense and and where there is no objection. If a board member happens to see an item that they would like to have pulled from a particular section, simply. Indicate that and we'll have that section removed and vote on that separately. So we're going to move into the minutes section and. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the minutes for February workshop and the February voting meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Wait, I I had something.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, John.
Just a quick item on the on the minutes. I was wondering if in on the conferences, if we could include for the future, not for tonight, of course. A line on the summary of the conference stating the purpose or the objective of the conference. So that we have a better sense of maybe a sense of accountability. Because I looked at those and I've looked at them before. And I guess it didn't hit me until I was reviewing the minutes for tonight's meeting. That it would, it helped me as a board member to know why we're sending people to conferences, particularly the ones that we're spending money on. The free ones, I I wouldn't look at this, but I was just, I just wanted to mention that. Again, for us to consider for future reports about conferences. To have a line in there that states purpose, objective. Why, why are we sending these administrators and or teachers to this conference? We do that for the field trips. Students are going to such and such an an organization for the purpose of or to see or to learn. I think it would be. Helpful to us as. Stewards of the taxpayers' money to know why we're sending people and spending money to these various conferences. So that's all. Didn't mean to draw a wrench into the works and again, nothing for tonight, but more for the future.
I just a point of clarification. So I I I understand what you're saying. Are you saying that that should be included in both the agenda and then in the minutes?
Well, if it's, if it's in the agenda, then and in the report, then of course it would be in the minutes. Yes.
So it would kind of make sense. That it would be included in both. And yeah, and then it would just be transferred over into the minutes.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And again, not starting tonight, starting with the next time we these appear on the agenda.
From the administrator's point of view, are there any concerns about that?
Dr. Hamburger, I think, I I think that's probably easily manageable. You know, we could, you know, when I look at how they're currently structured on the agenda, it would be very simple, I think, to just add an additional line that says purpose. And then a very succinct statement that specifies. The reason why they're going so that that additional information is there. We we have all of that on the form that we get internally in the district, so it's just a matter of of adding it on to the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. Any other, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries, I believe that's eight zero. Okay. Treasurers' report. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the payments and wages of Exeter Township School District employees for the two week. School closer period for March sixteenth through March twenty seventh.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries eight zero. And Treasurer's Consent Agenda Report. Recommended the Board of Directors approve the Treasurer's Report from February and payment requests. February nineteenth through March seventeenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries eight zero. Word policies, we have two sets of, of policies essentially, um, one for first reading, series for first reading, which are policies numbered one through seven. And then policies eight through fourteen for second reading, reminder that second reading uh, is the final reading, once, uh, these are approved. These become official policy, the school, policy of the school district. So it's recommended the Board of School Directors approve for first reading policies numbered one through seven.
Second.
We have a second from Allison. What was Allison, wasn't it?
It was.
Okay, thought I recognized that. And, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries eight zero. And then for the second reading policies, number eight through fourteen, it's recommended the Board of School Directors approve those policies for second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Good, we'll move on to business functions, Mr. Aaron's.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. It is reported that the district will purchase approximately four thousand six hundred gallons of liquid propane gas from E.G. Smith, a roads energy company during FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty one at a fixed contract price of one dollar and twenty cents per gallon. Is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following business functions items, numbers one, two, and three. And quickly, I just want to point out here that there was a new addition, um, that was put on the agenda today, which is a resolution. That would extend the collection period for the business privilege tax, which is a local tax that is levied by the district and the township, um, of Exeter. Uh, and that suggested a delay is from April fifteenth, which is the current collection deadline to July fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, the purpose for that July date is to be in conjunction with the delayed schedule for federal uh, tax withholdings, um, or for federal tax returns, I apologize. And is there anything that you want to add to that, um, synopsis or that I cover it?
I, I'll just add that it makes sense to do this because the forms that people or businesses fill out for business privilege tax require federal tax forms to be attached. So with, uh, the extensions and other filings, uh, it makes sense because people won't be able to complete this form if they're not doing their federal, uh, until July or after April fifteenth. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, Anne, thank you.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, personnel committee, Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. One. Two of certificated staff, extracurricular staff, support substitutes. Three, four, and five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the filing personnel items. Two, A, the appointment of superintendent Kimberly I Minor effective July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, at an annual salary of one hundred seventy two thousand pursuant to a contract attached and made a part of these minutes.
Second. I'll, I'll let John have it.
Your second from Mr. Fidler? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's approved, eight zero. And we welcome Dr. Kimberly Minor as our new superintendent, starting July first. I know we have Dr. Minor on the line, and I would like to ask that we open her up visually and through my, her microphone and allow Dr. Minor, Minor to say a few words.
Hello.
Hi, Dr. Minor.
Hi, hi, thank you very much, uh, Dr. Hamburger. I would just like to thank the board. I am extremely excited to join, uh, the administrative staff at Exeter and to meet the students, the community, uh, the parents, uh, and everyone there, um, in person. Hopefully, we will be beyond the point of video, um, by July one, and it is an honor. Everyone that I have spoken to has, um, absolutely wonderful things to say about the school district and the community. Uh, and I really look forward to joining that group. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Dr. Minor. We're really looking forward to, uh, seeing more of you and this is a real tough time for us, obviously. So, uh, as we transition, I know that we had anticipated making more opportunities for you to see the district, I'm afraid that's probably not going to be, uh, a possibility. So we'll do the very best we can, uh, when we get closer to your actual, um, you know, date of, uh, uh, start date. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on in the, um, agenda to student functions with Mrs. Stratton.
Okay, well, the first item there is to report on field trips that are or are to occur within sixty mile radius. Um, then the next item, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors following student function items, uh, one, which are field trips beyond sixty mile radius. Hopefully, those will get to occur, otherwise items two, three, and four.
A second, but it, yeah, then I have questions, like what are we going to do about that? Should we not approve them?
I guess it's kind of contingent, right? Is that how it works?
Dr. Phillips, what's the, what's the plan for the, uh, field trips at this point?
Well, as was, we know the governor has indefinitely closed the schools. I would approve them, but quite honestly, I, I don't see us coming back at least until May, if not further beyond that point. But if it was to happen, I think having them approved would at least be able to let the kids go. Um, prior to having a emergency meeting, what that happened.
So essentially, they, they would be approved with the understanding that
If they happen.
Yeah, if, if they, if they, if they happen, and if we happen to be back in time and they can be, and they could be held as, as planned, then they've been auth- authorized by the board. Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Okay, uh, do we have another um, item, Mrs. Stratton? Or did we, um, did we cover? Did we cover student functions consent agenda, or I'm sorry, the, uh, uh, we did the field trips, um, yeah, we did those, okay.
All items one through four, yeah.
Yep, we're good. Okay, now we're getting into committee reports. The athletic committee, uh, and these will be very brief because, I mean, obviously, there is, um, not a whole lot going on right now. And there's not a whole lot to report, but if there is anything, anybody would feel compelled to report, now's the time. So we'll start out with the athletic committee. Mr. Aaron's, are you still?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of anything, um, that Mike has wanted me to bring up for this evening. Um, I know that he was planning to have a meeting, but in light of circumstances, I don't think that's going to happen for the foreseeable future. Um, but if there is any movement, I'll be sure if I'm the first person to hear about it, or if Mike asked me to, uh, to, to notify the rest of the board.
Thanks, Mr. Aaron's. Business Functions Committee, Mr. Aaron's.
Um, so we are going to be having a Zoom meeting, um, to discuss, uh, business functions items on, uh, the eighth of April. Um, that meeting is going to be discussing our capital projects and the potential of additional funds being borrowed as a part of our refinancing package later in the year. Um, the second stage, that wouldn't be a part of the first stage. Um, so we're looking forward to that conversation. We're going to have to work out some logistics in terms of providing the Zoom meeting credentials to board members, but we'll, we'll, we'll get on that. Um, in addition to that, um, as Anne had referenced earlier, uh, the uh, committee has asked the administration to provide a video, um, recording in the format of a webinar-like event um, to the board, uh, to summarize their proposals in terms of the reduction, um, in the budget. And that's going to be prepared in advance of the workshop meeting where we're going to be able to discuss it for the first time. And, and those documents, um, and that recording will also be made available to the public. Um, and, uh, we're, we're steaming ahead on that. The discussion on the fourteenth is going to be critical, uh, as it's going to be the first, um, project where the board is actively discussing some of these reductions that are going to change our operations in, um, a more significant way than what I think the administration has worked on, um, thus far. And I, I, I really appreciate the work that they've been doing to prepare this. And I know there's a lot of things going on, so I just want to say thank you again for the work they're doing on that and that. Um, we're eager to get started on that work. Um, I just want to add, uh, one item as well that, uh, we're going to, in the future, be talking about how we want to organize this budget town hall. Originally, this was, um, uh, created with the intention of having a physical meeting, um, and that's not likely to happen. So, uh, we're going to have to discuss some logistics around that, but I will notify, notify members of the board. When we have, uh, some clarity around those. I do, do other than that, I don't have, uh, anything else to report. I just, you know, again, I want to thank, um, the administration for the work that they've done. I, I was, I was very pleased to see, uh, the numbers in the budget this evening. Um, and I think, um, it'll be important as we continue to move forward to do so in a strategic way. Um, and, uh, that's going to be my focus, and I, I think that's been the committee's focus this, uh, time. And I think that there's, um, going to be some good lessons learned at this point. And we're going to have some time to discuss with, um, any other members of the board, any questions that they have. And if you do have suggestions about how to better understand, um, any of these budget reduction package items, um, if you have questions about details in the budget, um, you know, feel free to reach out to Anne. Um, and, uh, you know, if you have suggestions about how to present those best to the board and to the public, feel free to reach out to me or Anne, and, and we'll start to incorporate that into some of the work that we're doing. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Thanks, Mr. Aaron. And, and I'm assuming that the April eighteenth, uh, Business Functions Committee meeting is open to the public, and that'll be advertised. And it'll be set up in a very similar fashion as, as the Zoom meeting we're having today.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the eighth or the eighteenth?
The, the eighth, I, I caught that too, I, yes, it, it, it's the eighth, but that'll be occurring.
Okay, eighth, alright. Curriculum Committee, Dr. McLendon.
Um, I had, yes, uh, Dr. Winters, if he could give the report. I attended the meeting, but by phone conference, and I didn't always hear everything, and they were referring, making reference to a PowerPoint, so I thought, you know, I asked him and he said he would do that. Dr. Winters?
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. So the Curriculum Committee of the Board met on March tenth. Um, at that meeting, um, we welcomed our new teacher representative to that committee, Mrs. Tiffany Mel. She's a community member, a parent, and also a teacher at Jackson Wald Elementary School in the fourth grade. Uh, she's taking Christie Kobel's position as Christie is now an administrator at Reifton. Uh, one of the items that we discussed at that meeting were federal programs. And Melissa Devlin, who's our supervisor of literacy and ESL, gave an update on federal programs. We had our monitoring visit on March fifth, and it went exceptionally well. Um, we had a fantastic visit, um, no major findings whatsoever. Uh, there was just one policy that we had to update that Mrs. Napoli was already updating, and it just got kind of caught in between, so great visit, went exceptionally well, great job, uh, to Melissa and the folks that she works with. Um, and as far as getting that ready. We've also received our funding adjustments for nineteen twenty for Title One and Title Two. Our Title One, uh, dollars dropped by just under ten thousand dollars, and our Title Two dollars dropped by eight hundred and ninety six dollars. Uh, it's not uncommon, once funding adjustments come through, for them to reduce a little bit, especially in these two areas. Title Three and Title Four stayed the same. Uh, Title Three is ESL, we get right around eleven thousand dollars a year, and Title Four is well-rounded education, and we get right around thirty three thousand. Uh, additionally, we just shared at that meeting that for the twenty twenty one school year, we're going to be going schoolwide at Jackson Wald and also at Lorraine. Um, it's not going to change the services that we provide, and it's not going to change how we spend our money. But by going schoolwide, it allows us to use title dollars to meet the needs of any child in that building as opposed to just those students that qualify for Title One. Uh, a second agenda item that we had that evening was to give some updates in general related to the curriculum and instruction department. We talked about virtual programs, um, and of course, this was all pre-COVID nineteen, but we had fifty seven students in our virtual academy, uh, in early March fifteen, we're full-time virtual academy. Forty-two were students that were taking one online course, uh, typically either a language or phys ed. Uh, next year, we plan to continue to offer our virtual academy using Edge Annuity. Uh, the only difference would be, um, that in lieu of contract negotiations, uh, the teachers have elected um, to not sign a new MOU until, uh, the contract is resolved. So we'll be using Edge Annuity content with Edge Annuity teachers next year. That does raise the cost, um, more than what it would be if we could use our own Exeter teachers, but it's still cheaper than if they were attending a cyber charter someplace else. Um, in terms of our supported cyber, which uses VLN partners, um, we'll continue to allow our current supported cyber kids to phase out with that product until they graduate. But any new supported cyber kids will use Edge Annuity. Uh, Melissa Devlin gave a brief update on where we are with ELA writing rubrics. There's been a lot of work done on improving our writing rubrics in ELA, uh, in particular, uh, at the K to four level, uh, looking at how we're scoring, making the scoring process easier to manage and easier to navigate for our teachers, and also to make it more succinct for our students. Writing is a focus area, we talked about that at the Curriculum Committee meeting, not only at the elementary grades, but moving up into the secondary level as well, making sure that when our students graduate, that they graduate with strong writing skills. And then Andy Wallach, our supervisor of math and STEM education, talked about some efforts that are underway to try to work on parental engagement related to math and math resources in our community. And, uh, we had that meeting set, uh, prior to all of this. We're in the process of getting that rescheduled, um, in light of the recent events. But the idea is to get administrators, teachers, um, uh, community folks involved with trying to figure out how we can best support students, um, at home related to math. And then we concluded the meeting that evening, talking about classroom floors a little bit. Uh, we currently have a policy in Exeter, policy one twenty-six, that sets our class size. We do not have any current language in that policy related to classroom floors. Other districts do, uh, Daniel Boone and Governor Mithlin are two examples. Uh, we had some preliminary discussion that night about putting language in our policy down the road related to classroom floors and what we may want to set that number at, be it ten or fifteen. And most policies that I've And most policies that I've looked at have language around, even if you set it at a number that with the recommendation of the superintendent, the board could still approve a class meeting with less than that number if, you know, if needed, be that an AP class or some other. So to some extent, that that topic is tabled a little bit, but it is still something we're keeping on the radar because it is something that we want to look at, especially in lieu of budget reductions moving forward. And our next meeting is April fourteenth before the workshop meeting, and indications at this point are probably going to be that it will relate to some extent to some sort of community share out or roll out around our Phase Two, and by then we should know more about Phase Three plan moving forward. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Winters. Very thorough. Facilities Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Just working on setting up our next meeting. That's all I have to report.
Do we have a date for that yet?
Not yet. Looking at next week, but I'll I'll send around a note.
Okay. Thank you. Personal Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
I don't have anything at this time.
Policy Committee, we will continue to chip away at the policies. We've been going through an extensive policy revision process, and we're nearing the end. I'd like, I'm happy to say, and continue to appreciate board members' involvement in reviewing those policies and providing us feedback, you know, when we when we send those out. Student Functions Committee, Mrs. Stratton.
Nothing.
Thank you. Technology Committee, Mr. Miller.
I really have nothing to report. The only thing I'll say is I definitely have to thank Joe Way and Joe Calamata for, and for all their hard work on what they've been doing for the school district, trying to get these K through four kids ready to to get started with computers. I'm sure they're going to have a a learning curve a little bit, but I really appreciate how they were able to adjust to this, I guess, this new normal that's going on, and I think they're doing a great job with that as as well as the communities, and hopefully, you know, they'll all appreciate how all the hard work they're doing. So that's all I really have to say about the technology part of it. I think they're doing a great job.
Yeah, the the technology folks are at the epicenter of this whole thing right now, and they're just, I, you know, I had a chance to, I've had a chance to talk about Joe and Joe Way and Joe Calamita and and these guys and their and the rest of the staff. I mean, all the people in NIT right now are just pouring their heart into the to the job, and it's really great to see the work that they've done. The Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Haring.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. As I read my report, keep in mind, I received this report on March fifteenth, so I'm not sure if the timelines are still accurate. ECF Teacher Mini Grant Application for the 2021 School Year has begun and was emailed to staff on March fifteenth. Teachers and staff can submit their projects of five hundred or less for consideration of funding. For the nineteen twenty school year, ECF funded eighteen projects totaling roughly $7,500. Examples included GoPro cameras, speed integration kits, Raspberry Pi accessories, online reading resources, art display boards, and Dash robots. Deadline for submissions is May first, and we're looking forward to this year's submissions. Few weeks ago, ECEF received a $2,000 check from BBNT for Exeter's EITC program. Currently, their total, $900 for Exeter, a new record for our program. March is a busy grant month. So far this month, ECF has applied for the following grants: $1,000 for Jacksonwald Elementary's playground and $1,000 for Walton Creek's playground via the Gilmore Headie Fund. Twenty-two thousand five hundred for fourteen water bottle filling stations throughout Exeter seven buildings via BCTF Building Industries Exchange of Burke County Grant. Notification of application outcome will occur in late May. We are working on a few other regional grants to the district with deadlines of late March and April. Lastly, the roast and toast that was scheduled for April twenty-sixth to honor Doctors Corvo and Martin has been postponed. Those who purchase tickets will receive a refund, and that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dr. Haring. Burke's Career and Tech Center Joint Operating Committee, Dr. McLendon.
Okay, we last met on February twenty-sixth. We did not have a meeting in March. It was scheduled for March twenty-fifth. We had some communication with Dr. Kraft during that time. But at the meeting back in February, we toured the IT program, and there were three students there who showed us some amazing things that they are doing in that program. We approved the budget that was sent to the districts. BCT received the Career and Technical Education Excellent Award. That award is given by Pennsylvania Department of Ed for technical schools that where their students score seventy-five percent or more of the student score in the advance on the NOCD assessment. And that's an award that the BCTC has achieved six or seven years in a row. The Skills USA is another competition that our students compete in, and there were twenty-six students that won a gold medal at from the West Campus and ten gold medalists from the East Campus. There was also the Communication Technology Program competed in a public service announcement contest on suicide prevention, and they won first place for their audio announcement. Where that was in February twenty twenty. And you can go to the, if you wanted to view that announcement or just see what, you know, previous years are also there, you go to the media dot P A dot gov website, and it's just a thirty-second announcement. It was really, really good. And then you can also see, like, last year, they won for a video announcement, the same contest. So I had, I had this book. I don't know if you can see the book there, but I was going to pass this around at our meeting, and can you see that? At all? Anyway, it has, this is the the Burke's Home Builders Association magazine, and they have an article in here on BCTC's Housing Project. It's their twenty-first house that they built, and so there's pictures and a couple of pages of articles in there. And also in this magazine, there's an article written about the Skills USA competition, and it's actually written by an Exeter High School student, Ben Wood. He's in the Cabin Cabinetry and Wood Technology Program. So I was, I was wondering how you could get this. I went on to the, if you go on to the Burke Home Builders website, they actually have this whole magazine there. So I would recommend that you read, you know, you know, about the house project, but also, you know, look at the article that the student wrote. It's really, really good. Let's see. So and also, you know, I'm not going to tell you what's in the JLC briefs, but Donna emailed that. She gave it out, I think, at the workshop meeting a couple of weeks ago, but she also emailed it out electronically so you could read over the other items from the board meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April twenty-second, and we're, they're working out how we're going to, you know, have that virtual meeting. And so that concludes my report.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon. Burke's County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors, the meeting that was scheduled for March nineteenth was was canceled. And the rescheduled meeting of the board is probably sometime in April, and it will be a virtual board meeting. You may recall, too, that there was a Burke's County Convention of School Directors meeting that was planned for April twenty-third. This is where all the school directors in the county get together, and at that time, they also processed the elections for BCI Board members. That's also been canceled, and the elections for for that will have to be done via mail vote. So that's, that's about all there is, other than the fact that, you know, it's pretty impressive to me, the kind of work that the BCIU continues to do, not only to support their twelve hundred employees and and all the, all the students that they serve, which includes all districts and that, all students in the county, all seventy thousand students, but also the the ongoing work that they do to coordinate the dialogue and the collaboration between the eighteen school districts in Burke's County. And I, and I know all of us in all categories of employee, you know, within Exeter depend upon the IU to support them for many of the various functions that they have to do, especially where they, when they have to coordinate with other schools. Going to move to the Legislative Liaison report, and that's Mr. Fidler.
Nothing to report.
Township Borough Liaison is normally Mr. Japina. Mr. Aaron's is our alternate. Mr. Aaron, is there anything that you wanted to report from the Township Borough Liaison?
So I've had a few communications with our liaison from the township from Exeter Township to the school district, Joe Staub, and I think Mike also had a conversation with him recently, and, you know, nothing but appreciation for the way that they've been cooperative with us on a number of fronts on on some zoning questions that we've had, as well as some discussion that we've had about some areas of common cooperation. And I'm having a conversation with Joe Staub tomorrow about something specific to the Business Privilege Tax Resolution that we passed this evening. So just very excited to continue working, and I just also want to mention that I think we should all be appreciative of the work that Central Burke's Police Department, Exeter Police Department, and the public works teams for both the Borough, St. Lawrence, and Exeter Township are doing. Because while much of the community is at home, they are not. They are reporting for work each and every day, and just want to say thank you for the work that they're doing in supporting our community in those regards. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Aaron. We're going to move to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Phillips.
Hey, Dr. Hammer, I have two things. One, Courtney Epler must be out there listening. She sent a clarification email that the students are no longer needing to be present for meal distribution. So parents can just show up at our sites and will be given the meals, and she sent a number that she has prepared three thousand meals for tomorrow at Antietam. So I think that should, that should, you know, hopefully be enough. If not, I know they're planning for more next week, as well as sending out more communication as to how the distributions will go. The other issue I wanted to talk about, and I might want to pass this to Michelle Stratton, if she'd like to talk about Exeter Cares really quickly. If not, I can just throw a plug out.
Yeah, I mean, so basically, a bunch of community members and several people that are on this meeting this evening have come together to create an organization called Exeter Cares, and what it's going to be is, I made some notes for myself here. There's going to be all the resources that anyone may need if they live in Exeter. So there's educational information on there. There's medical information, what local restaurants are open, community happenings, like if there's a gymnast offering a free class, or Ryan Parsons Magician is putting on a show and you want to watch it, you know, how can you take advantage of these things? If you need some pet support, if you need meal support, pretty much anything during this time that someone might need. But then on the flip side, we're having a thing called, it's called Give Help, Get Help. So there's lots of people out there that need help, but there's lots of people that also want to help, and they don't know how to help, so they can click on the link, and then they can offer their help to the people out there that might need it. And we're trying to have all the information that links directly to the sites. For education, it goes right to the school's website with all the correct information so that we're not giving anything that is misleading. But it's a really great way for people to get the right information, and it's a good collaboration between the school, the community, the township. And we're hoping that, you know, we all make it through this, and afterwards, this resource can be used throughout the community and other groups as well. So thank you to those of you that are on this meeting that have helped us with that. So thanks.
Thank you for that description. Just one more point of clarification, I guess, to to continue to look at our website, continue to follow Exeter Cares. They'll have information on there. As we roll through Phase Two and Phase Three, we want to make sure everyone understands the collaboration and the support from the district and the families. That is my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Now, I understand we have some some questions or comments from community members, so we're going to open up our public comment section one more time with the understanding that we we may have some that have been written in during our during our meeting, and I'll ask Joe or Joe Way or Joe Calamita if they can help us out in some way to communicate with those where we can, how we can address those questions or comments. Are you fellows there?
I am. This is Joe Way. Yeah, we received a couple of questions coming in just after the public question and the public comment session ended earlier. I did email the questions to you and Dr. Phillips. If you'd like me to read them, I can. You find them here. The the first question I had was from Jen Hemstree, who is a resident and secretary. The question was, will the support staff continue to be paid and retain their health insurance throughout this time, like the certified staff?
And I'll, I would like, you know, Mrs. Guy, Dr. Phillips, your response to that.
Well, per per the signed bill seven fifty-one, which is now considered Act thirteen of twenty twenty, all school employees are to be paid no more, no less through this process. So, yes, they will be paid.
There was also a question.
Go ahead and answer the question.
Was there a second part to that question, or it was just regarding pay?
It was the benefits.
Okay.
It was pay and benefits, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that was a pretty I'm sorry, I just wanted to say I I thought that was a pretty clear message from the governor, and and it was also reiterated in the bill, you know, which is that as of March thirteenth, those folks who were working at that time would be paid no more or no less than they were receiving at that time through the remainder of this this time, which I'm assuming would go through the the two thousand nineteen twenty school this, school year. Joe, another question.
Yeah, students have instruments, personal belongings, et cetera, still at school. Is there a plan for how to be able to collect their belongings should we not return until August?
Me myself. At this point, we're still under the governor's edict to not have anyone in the buildings except their essential personnel. As soon as we are given some leeway to that, we will certainly let the community know that they can come in and get the information, the materials. And if it drags on longer and it gets into the summer, we have a a way to get the information and materials out. It'll just take some organization. But yes, we can do that, but not at this point. Right now, that's not the governor's ruling.
I I'd just like to comment, I, you know, as a as somebody who was in the music program through my schooling, it would be very unsettling to me to to think that I had to go two or three months without access to my instrument. If there's anything we can do to allow folks to be able to locate and pick up their instrument. I know we're doing a similar kind of a thing with computers right now to maybe a more limited degree, but I I personally really feel for folks, you know, and kids, you know, who depend upon a practice schedule in order to maintain their musical skills, and certainly if they want to continue to progress and enjoy their music, they would need access to their their instruments. So anything we could do in that area, I I would be very supportive of.
Dave.
Well, if that's what the board would like us to do, then it, once we get the computers out, which is the, which is the priority right now, we'll, we'll, we'll do it. That's fine.
Ann, I'm sorry, Dr. Dr. Haring. Dr. Haring, did you have a comment? Okay, anybody, does anybody have any, any comment or concern about that?
I'm sorry, Dave. I I kind of
I'm sorry, Dave. I, I kind of lost you guys. So I don't know if anyone said anything and I also lost the feed, but I did want to say that Mrs. Selke is offering for the kids to come in Thursday and in a lot of time to pick up their instrument if they want to.
Is it at the high school?
At the high school, yes.
Dr. Phillips.
I, I'm confused. That, that wasn't approved. It was only to have staff come in. So I could speak to Mr. Campbell about that because if we're gonna do that, then it would be fair to do it throughout the district.
So do it.
Okay, well, it looks like, you know, I think the, the goal there would be to, to do whatever we can to try to facilitate that, those parent requests. Mr. Way, are there any additional questions?
Yes, second question was, is there a goal to try and get the students back into school before the end of the year so that they can have some closure with their current teachers? Or are we telling parents that the remainder of the school year will be completely online?
That is up to the governor at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, my understanding is that schools are closed indefinitely.
A similar question is if school is closed for the remainder of the year, is there a plan to still hold graduation ceremony for seniors?
We have started preliminary discussions about that. I think I'd like to have Mr. Campbell get involved with the student leadership of the senior class to figure out what that looks like. Some districts have floated an idea of a virtual graduation. Others have pushed it off until like August or even next fall. It, I think we're gonna let that up to what the students and the administration work out. But there is a plan to try and work that out, yes.
The last question is about kindergarten enrollment. Just asking if it's going to be completely online. And is there any communication going out in regards to changes to kindergarten registration?
Okay, I'm gonna keep unmuting and muting. Yes, we're gonna try and do the best we can to register online. And then once we get through this process, if there's paperwork we have to collect, we'll do that. I do want to point one thing out. I just got a, a text from Mr. Campbell. He just said the comment about instrument pickups at the high school is not accurate. Mrs. Selke is not doing that. He just spoke to her today. I just wanted to make sure that's clear to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Any other, any other comments?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Dan Hearing, if a student is in need of a work permit, what are they able to do that at this point at all?
Well, the principals are not in the buildings. I'm not quite sure how we would do that. I'm not sure it can be done virtually, but I can check into to see how that can work to try and take care of that.
If you could, I'd appreciate that because that's been asked actually a few times to me.
Oh, I'll try to work with Mr. Campbell. I'm sure there's a workaround we can do virtually.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Dave, I had received via the YouTube page and an email from one of the residents named Ava Ross. And her, she had two questions. She was wondering if there could be clarification around the school lunches. Do the children have to be in the vehicle? Parents, can they choose to pick up at any location? Such as can they choose to go to a Wotton or Antietam pool? And then the second question was, can the district come up with an approved technology that all teachers in the district can use? As at the moment, it's difficult to keep up with the different programs that we're using such as Zoom, Flipgrid, Google Classroom, Schoology, YouTube, Facebook, messages, text, email, et cetera. Her comment was that this is just challenging for some parents who are going to and from work right now. And I'm sure it's challenging for parents who are at home as well. So she, that was, that was her question.
Well, number one, we answered the question about the lunches already. As far as what the teachers were doing, they were being very creative as well as putting as many resources as possible to review and engage with our students. Phase two will become much more structured now. Those resources are still there for students to engage and, and, and work with whenever they'd like. But no, phase two will be much more structured.
Okay.
And, and Dr. Phillips, if I could just add to that as well, with phase two, the learning management system that all content will be on is Schoology and that will be universal, you know, across level. So I think that will assist with that. We've also put some parameter in, parameters in place to say that moving forward, if you're going to do a online communication, everybody uses Google Meet and not some use Google Meet and others use Zoom. Here in the early stages, we've used both, but moving forward, it will just be Google Meet. And, and we're also trying to, within that structure in different areas, try to kind of pare it down to resources that folks are familiar with that on the E L A side, you know, foundations at the elementary level, New Zella at the secondary level, resources that our teachers know and our kids know. So to Dr. Phillips' point, it won't be as much of a curricular smorgasbord moving forward. It's gonna be much more structured.
Just, just to follow up real quick, and I probably said it too quickly. One of the questions that Ms. Ross had was if parents could go and do meal pickups at any of the buildings or if they needed to only be at one specific location.
Well, again, and I'm gonna jump in on this one. If we're not asking the students to be in the cars, I can think they can go pretty much wherever they would like, correct? And if it's gonna be all students.
To clarify, the, the plan for this week is to distribute as we did last week. They'll be prepared for next week to where all the meals will be free to eighteen students eighteen and under and students do not have to be present. We are going to try and send out a message before tomorrow's pickup times to let families know students do not have to be present. But again, the shift to all sites being free will take place next week. That communication will go out on Thursday. Because right now, this just happened yesterday, we're prepared to do the format that we did last week.
So to clarify, are we saying tomorrow it's only free and reduced lunch in our buildings and free for everyone at Antietam?
That's correct. So if she wants to go to Antietam, she can go to Antietam.
Okay. Is that clear, Mr. Aaron?
Two comments. One, I wanted to go back to the Exeter Cares for a moment and just mention that our first meeting was only last Wednesday, so it has even been a week since we've created this idea and come up with all these resources. So there is a website, but the website is not active yet. So if you goes to, if you go to extracare.com, it'll say coming soon. So be patient with us while we get that running. We do anticipate having Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all those things more as a way to direct people to the site, not necessarily to have double the information. Maybe to highlight some things, but the website will be the main place to go. We're also getting yard signs that we're gonna put up at like major intersections and the grocery stores, places where people are frequenting this time so that they see that. And then there'll also be a phone number on there. So if someone does not have internet access, they can call that number, get in touch with someone and we can you know, get them toward them to go. And then the other thing that I want to mention is that Teachers in the Parks has a super awesome program called Tips Live right now that is open to any student preschool through fourth grade. My boys have done it yesterday and today and they really enjoyed it. Sad to say, I think they might have enjoyed it better than my teaching. I've been trying really hard. So I would say, you know, Exeter students, any student can, you know, if you've got a cousin that lives in California, they can go on and check this program out for free. So I say kudos to all of our Exeter teachers for doing that.
Great to see people step up. It, it really is.
And I just to add that Tips Live is made to be after school in addition to what they would do. And so it's offered in the evening time so that parents are available to kind of see the instruction and see what they should be doing to help their students. So it's kind of like a collaborative effort, effort to show, show the kids and the parents what they should be doing at home.
Did we receive any additional comments or questions from the public that anybody's picked up on?
I have a clarification for Dr. Herring already. Mr. Campbell must be listening, so he's out there. He'll be looking into what's legally required. At this point, there's a need for original documents, but he's gonna see if there's a way to have them scanned and do it totally virtual. So there's more to come on that. He's gonna look into the process first as what the state requires.
Okay. Are, are there any board members who would prefer to be heard at this time?
I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to Dr. Phillips, Dr. Winters, all of our tech staff. I mean, I think that the communications that are going out, they're just so full of information and it's reassuring to people knowing that, you know, you guys are working so hard on it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if not, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
All moved.
All approved? Say aye.
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 Okay, so we're, we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be April fourteenth as a workshop, same format. Our next voting meeting will be April twenty first, again, using the Zoom conference, conference format. Want to wish everybody safe and healthy couple of weeks. Sharon, I hope you're feeling better. I know you weren't sure if you were gonna participate today, but you hung in there. I hope you get well soon and everybody else just be safe and we'll get through this. Yeah. So good, good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.